This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our October Board of Selectmen meeting here at North Haven's Town Hall. I'm Mike Frieda, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'd like to start by asking everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two, are there any public comments to tonight's agenda?
Actually, I have one, Michael. I noticed a typographical error in paragraph fifteen, the bond releases of our agenda, page four. One, two, three, four, the fourth bond release down. We have six of them tonight. That's P 20 dash 24 regarding 384 State Street. The current balance of the bond should read 2,500 instead of the 5,500. And so I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to reflect the current balance of the bond in the amount of 2,500 for P 20 dash 24.
Okay, we have a motion to amend. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? For hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, Sally. Motion passes. Okay, any other public comment? Mr. Mikus.
Good evening. Dave Mikus, 30th Central Avenue. I'm coming to you today as the president of the North Haven High School Booster Club. And I just, regarding item number four and the naming of the press box, the Rob Pethick Senior Press Box, I just wanted to give a little bit of history about Mr. Pethick and why we felt it was so important that we honor him in this way. Mr. Pethick was a longtime volunteer for the North Haven High School Football Program. And he could be found on many, many Friday nights up on top of the press box filming the games and making sure that the team had plenty of film to record and study. Mr. Pethick passed away unfortunately, very suddenly, in 2015. And since that time, his family has very generously sponsored a golf tournament annually in his name. And the proceeds from that tournament probably totaling the tens of thousands of dollars over the last seven years. They've donated that money to the high school football program, which has been used for equipment and scholarships and things of that nature, which has been extremely generous for the Pethick family to continue this tradition and this act of generosity towards the program. So we thought it'd be very appropriate to name this press box in honor of Mr. Pethick, who spent so many Friday nights up there benefiting the football program and others. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you. All right, so... Let's move to item three, and I'm only hesitating because I just wanted to follow up on what Dave said. But item number three, approval of minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting of September 1st, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Coming back to item number four, we'll have either Sally or Bill read that, but I wanted to just tie into Mr. Mikus' comments. So, the genesis of this was the movement from the sports community, including the group that Mr. Mikus represents, including the school, the school district, the athletic director, the superintendent, and all those involved from an athletic standpoint regarding this particular issue. Rob was a remarkable man, and he passed away much too soon. But down through the years, as Dave had mentioned, I'd see him at the games. He'd be filming the games. He would be doing things for the sports community. So, this item is on the agenda as part of a process, based on the recommendation of leading citizens like Dave, the group of people whom Dave represents, the school system, the athletic director, a unanimous request to have this moved forward. So tonight, this is on the agenda to try to move this forward to get it to a town meeting. The town meeting has already been established. Valerie has the date. And then at the town meeting, people will speak out, speak up. And then at that point, there'll be a vote at the town meeting to name this press box after Rob Pethick. We went through this last year, so with the late young man, Anthony Longley. And that was the same concept in terms of the process, the Board of Selectmen warning the town meeting, having citizens speak on its behalf. So, thank you, Dave, for being here and providing that clarity to the board. And that's the rest of the story, okay, what I just shared. So, who'd like to read item number four?
I'll do it. To consider and act upon a resolution recommending to town meeting the naming of the press box at Vanacore Field as the Rob Pethick Senior Press Box.
Okay.
So, yes, this is very similar to what we did for naming the new facility.
Yes.
There, the concession stand slash locker.
That's right.
Facility through us at a town meeting. I was wondering, and I am very supportive of this. I'm well aware of Mr. Pethick's work for student athletes. So I support this. I just was wondering, was the Board of VED... I know it has to be done by a town meeting, and we call the town meeting. But did they take a position on this?
They supported, yes. Unanimously supported.
It was unanimously...
Yes.
I just was wondering that fact. So, I think that this is a nice acknowledgement of his years of service and dedication and a continuing monument to the foundation that raises money for the football team. Is the press box used for any other athletic events besides football?
David?
Well, the youth football program also uses it. And for a number of years, there was many senior nights for lacrosse, field hockey. They were held on Vanacore Field because of the facility.
Right.
It was easy to hold a senior night there as opposed to, say, on the turf fields at this time, where there's no amenities. There's no speaker, there's no lights, there's no... So now, that may change in the future. But right now, it's mostly used for the football programs, both high school and youth, and whomever might use the facility.
Right. I know the graduation is often at the field.
Congratulations.
Is there ever a public address announcer for the track meets that...
There is, absolutely, yes.
Occur there, yeah. It would be nice... I know Mr. Pethick was dedicated to the football team, but it would be nice if his foundation maybe acknowledged and assisted other programs now that this press box is used for other programs, maybe. But that would be up to the foundation.
And the high school booster club is involved with the foundation as well. So, in that regard, we do spread the assistance throughout the sports community.
Right, you see my... Again, Mr. Mikus, I know this gentleman, you know my dedication to North Haven football for about 60 years now. So I fully support this, but I have to look at the whole picture. So I think we have to realize this press box is used not just for football, but it certainly is a great idea, and I fully support it. And so, Bill, did you have anything, or should I read?
No, I mean, I agree with all the comments.
Okay, so... I'll go forward with the resolution?
Very good choice.
Yes, go to the resolution.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to give you the chance.
No, I appreciate it. I think everybody is... I couldn't have said it better than Dave and you did, and Mike.
Yes. So I...
I'm definitely in agreement.
I will enthusiastically resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the town meeting that the press box at Vanacore Field be named the Rob Pethick Senior Press Box.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
In the discussion, I'd like to sum it up by saying that I've known a lot of people down through the years in North Haven, both personally and professionally, serving as your first selectman for seven terms now. Rob Pethick Senior, one of the finest men I ever met and never knew. I think it's a worthy designation. I support it 100 percent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then item number six, Sally or Bill?
Bill, why don't you read the call?
Thank you, Sally. And then, item number six, in keeping with the previous two items, is to consider and vote upon a call for a special town meeting to be held Monday, October 24th, 2022, in the auditorium of the North Haven High School, 221 Elm Street, North Haven, Connecticut, at 7:00 PM, to consider and act upon the following. To consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the naming of the press box at Vanacore Field, the Rob Pethick Senior Press Box.
I'll second that call.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry. I was too quick.
Wait your turn, Bill.
I'm sorry.
We are waiting for our town council, Jennifer Capola. She's not here yet, so she really... There she is, right here. Okay.
Good timing.
Right on cue. We are on item number seven, update on the draft for affordable housing. Jennifer Capola.
So, again, Jennifer Capola from Seale, Denofrio, and I am counsel to your Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee. And at this point, as I think I had last updated you, we have retained a consultant, Glenn Chalder, from Planometrics. And Glenn has revised the draft Affordable Housing Plan that was prepared through the COG and the COG consultant. He has met a couple of times with the committee. The draft is in very good shape. We anticipate that you will have it for your November meeting. The next meeting of the committee is going to be on Monday, October 17th, at 6:00 PM. And that is a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. The draft is now far enough along that they're going to be getting input, again, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did have a couple of prior meetings with the commission. And this will be the input from the commission on the near final draft. So, I anticipate that, you know, I'll be able to distribute a copy to you. I know that your November meeting is November 3rd, so it is very early in the month. So I anticipate that you'll have it, you know, that next week, the week of the 24th.
What, you mean have the draft?
I'm sorry?
What do you say, have it? Do you mean...
The draft of the plan that will be coming to you for you to review and schedule for the public hearing.
As I just have a... Before we talk more about the substance of the matter, procedurally, I noticed, selectman, Bill Piper has a draft. I do not have one.
Well, I had distributed an earlier draft to you.
These are the first drafts?
Yeah. I had distributed...
This is all I have, is what was...
It's in that book, yes.
It's in this book?
Do you have this?
So you have the COG, you have the COG draft. You don't have the revised draft from the new consultant.
No, I don't have that.
Is that what's coming, Jen, who you're talking about, the revised draft?
Yes. That has been prepared by Planometrics.
Okay, all right.
But what they both have, that thing, I don't have that.
You should, because I came to a meeting and I distributed it to all three of you.
Yeah, that's how we...
I've been to every meeting. Could I have, when I handed in the other paperwork?
Yeah, I can certainly...
Let me check and I'll call you.
Please do.
Some, after the meetings, sometimes it's a little confusing with some paperwork I have to sign. I could have misplaced it. So I'll check, and I'll call you if I don't have it, and then...
That sounds great. I can send you an electronic version and certainly drop another hard copy in the mail to you. I'm happy to do that. But yeah, I have given you...
Because Bill thought he got his of the bail, which I know I didn't get.
I couldn't remember whether I... You gave it to us at the July 7th meeting, or it might have got mailed to us something?
I have periodically given you portions of what was distributed. So, yeah. No, it would have been given to you, hand-delivered to you at a meeting.
No, no problem. I...
Because you did come to the July 7th meeting, and I think that's...
Yes, I remember.
That was my first guess, was you gave it to us.
So, I will just make one comment. That version that you have, it has a lot of statistical information and a lot of demographics in it. What you're going to see in the new plan is it truly is the plan. You know, you reached the goals by page six, you know, and the various strategies. The other key part of it, too, is that agencies of the town are assigned for execution of the strategies, which is certainly an important piece in terms of evaluating, you know, is the plan being complied with. We're going to evaluate that. It's a five-year plan. And then when it comes time to update the plan in 2027, you know, we'll have a better idea, too, of, you know, what's been complied with and what still needs further work, and so on and so forth. So, again, I'll be here at your November meeting. You'll have it well enough in advance to sit down with it and digest it. And it really is a very good plan. I myself am very pleased with the path that it's taken.
Jen, can you update this board? Because there has been a lot of publicity on this about towns not being the deadline. We filed for an extension. Share with Bill and Sally and our audience the filing of extension that we did and what the date is on us having to get it to the state.
So, we did indicate to the state that we would not have it in by the June 1st deadline. We notified them before that. I got a very nice response from the state thanking us for, you know, letting them know. I believe that the last number that I heard was approximately 1/3 of the municipalities in the state have not filed their plan. I've not looked at... There is a list online. They have posted the plans online, and I believe that's available through OPM. So you can go to OPM's website, and you could take a look at some of the other towns' plans. Again, you know, we've gone through a process. You had a committee, you know, you didn't just hire a consultant, but you had a committee, had a committee that has worked very hard. They were holding community outreach sessions to get information from organizations in the community and professionals in the community who had information to share about the housing affordability gap and other related issues. So, you have on your agenda tonight just to send another update to the state indicating, you know, where we are at this point. And I wanted to have that meeting scheduled, that joint meeting scheduled, before we did that, so that way we would know in terms of making our next commitment for a deadline, you know, that we're going to be able to meet that. You know, it's difficult. You have a 10-member committee. Obviously, you know, they're very busy people. It's a great committee in terms of their professional experience that they have and their ability to contribute to this effort. But they're busy people, and so, you know, to bring them together for the necessary meetings to really get a nice finished product has taken some time. And I think the state understands that, that, you know, and if you go on and you look at the various plans, you know, they're different in terms of what their content is. And I think your ultimate plan is going to reflect the amount of effort that went into it.
So for those watching who may be listening to this for the first time, let me share with you some additional perspective. Prior to all this becoming a mandate that we had as municipalities to submit a plan, all along, there was a state mandate that 10% of housing units, dwelling units in any municipality had to be affordable. Thirteen years ago, when I took office, we were at 4.2% versus the 10% mandate. I met with the Commissioner of Housing back at that time many times. Yvonne Klein was her name. And I've stayed on top of this for years in terms of trying to present the fact that we will do everything we can, but 10% is a very difficult number to get to. We are now at 5.8% after all these years. So this plan that we will see and that we will submit to the state will show some momentum, what we've done, the processes, putting the committee together. Mr. Bill Richards is here tonight. He was on the, he's been on the committee for quite some time. So, and one final point. We have a major project I'm working on on Washington Avenue, 225 apartments there at the site of an old dilapidated building for decades. It's on the west side of Route 5. That'll be a 20% affordable component out of the 225. So we'll pick up some units that way. There'll be a retail piece on the bottom, a mixed use that we're working on with the developer. But always remember this, for those who like math. When you add one affordable unit, in mathematics, there's what's called the numerator and the denominator. When you add a affordable unit, or 10 affordable units, to the numerator, the denominator also increases by 10. So you're not, you're not, we don't have a static denominator. When you add affordable units, like 20% of 225, let's say that's 44 units, 44 units gets added to the numerator, and the denominator increases by 44. So it's very difficult to get to 10%. And in those communities, I think Jen lives in Guilford, is a good example, where there's no sewer or water, it becomes much more challenging to try to build these types of complexes because the infrastructure is just not there to support it. In North Haven, we have 70% of our citizens have sewer and water, and 30% have well and septic. So that's just a summarization. Some additional perspective for those who may be watching, who may be wondering what this is about. And Jennifer, I think, very aptly summarized what the next steps are for us.
Yes.
I think, hold on, I think, doesn't the denominator go up 225? If it's 44 affordable housing units, it's out of 225. So then the denominator goes up 225. Am I not correct?
Yeah, well, I've given you an example. You're right, the denominator, my point is...
It's not one-on-one. What you need, because whenever, if you have 225 units, that's now... Let's say we had 9,000 housing units before. Now we have 9,025, 9,225. So 10% of that goes up. So the question is, does the number of affordable units help close the gap rather than just keep it at the same ratio? So if you're going up, if you're increasing, if you're making 20% of them, 200, of the 225, if you're making 20% of them affordable, classifying as affordable, that will help tick up that 5.8.
So, that's true. So consider this.
It's not 44, 44, it's 44 over 225.
So consider this. In 13 years, we went from 4.2 to 5.8. And we've added affordable units. So the message I'm trying to deliver here, it's impossible because both the numerator and the denominator get affected.
Keep climbing, yeah.
Keep climbing, right.
Right, and they, but they don't climb the same, as you said. I think it's great that we are on the right track. That's, it might not sound like a large increase going from 4.2 to 5.8 when the threshold is 10, but that's a very significant increase. And you might recall, I worked with, back in 2015, I collaborated with State Representative Dave Accarino, and we tried to put together a three-tiered system of the thresholds. Because I considered the 10% sort of lazy legislation because there's such a diversity of types of communities in our little state. You have very rural communities in the corners, and you have lots of suburban towns like us. Then you've got the five or six bigger cities. You know, I was arguing that it should be a tiered threshold based on the percentage of single-family residences in the community. So that if you have, for example, like we do, probably close to 80 to 85% single-family resident, maybe our threshold should be 7.5. Whereas municipalities with 50% single-family residents, they should be at 10%. Do you remember?
Absolutely, and I can make a lot of comments about that. I mean, you have some communities, like Fairfield, they've had an affordable housing plan for a very long time.
Right.
And they have a very low percentage of affordable housing. And, you know, when they did the guidebook, I think you have the guidebook in your binder from the Department of Housing and the Regional Plan Association. I participated in a webinar before that guidebook was released. And the folks from DOH that were essentially hosting that webinar indicated, you know, that they fully expected that in the analysis of, you know, how much affordable is needed in one municipality versus another, that there could be neighboring municipalities that have a very different result. You know, one may need 12% affordable. They may need more than 10%. And another, you know, immediately abutting, may need, you know, 4%. So, you know, that, I think, you know, there was talk about, you know, that was the point of doing all this. I mean, most towns have had affordable housing plan per se in their P O C Ds, but now we're doing a separate plan with specific goals and strategies. And, you know, it becomes more measurable in terms of the progress that's made. But it is true. I mean, North Haven, you know, is considered to have quite a bit of success in this area. And I think people don't really realize that just because we're not, we're under 6%, we're not at the 10% threshold. But we did have significant growth. But, so one of the things that's going to be discussed with planning and zoning, you know, should we have inclusionary zoning? Should we have some requirement that every residential project have a certain percentage of affordable? You know, that's something that is in the plan as a strategy to consider and study and figure out, you know, does it make sense to do that? So there's a lot of little components to this. I want to emphasize again, and this is very important when we talk about, oh, you know, there's all these towns that have their plans, and not all of them held a public hearing. Their process was not the same as yours. So I want to emphasize that because I do know that there's been newspaper articles written, you know, not all towns have their plans, and so on and so forth. But you're holding a public hearing. You've had a very public process. There've been a ton of meetings at the committee level that the public could have come. You know, we've held hybrid meetings, so they've been in-person, and there's been a remote option. So, you know, there's been the ability to really participate and learn about it. The draft plan, that's going to be before you, is going to be on, you know, the town's website so people can certainly, you know, take a look at it and come and ask any questions when you have your public hearing. And you'll have the ability to revise it if you want to revise it. You know, it's not set in stone because ultimately, it's your board that's going to adopt it. So, I could talk about affordable housing for hours with you.
Well, I mean, it's certainly, I think, essential that we make, we continue to put the pedal to the metal to increase affordable housing, which, the purpose of which is to keep, is to enable working families to stay, to be here, whether it's firemen, or policemen, or teachers, nurses. You know, people think affordable housing has to do with the price of the house. It has to do with the income, really, of the person living there. And my point now, and back in 15, was that it's very difficult for a community like North Haven to reach that 10% because we have such a high percentage of single-family residences. So, the increase over the past 13 years from 4.2 to 5.8 may not sound like a lot, but as I said, it is a very significant increase. And I commend Mr. Frieda's administration for the efforts to make that increase. But, you know, we've got to do more. It's really tough, though.
It is. Just to tie into what Sally just mentioned earlier, when she talked about, I'll paraphrase, the young professionals. So, on Middletown Avenue, we attracted nurses, pharmacists right out of school who needed that type of affordable housing. And it was indexed, to Sally's point, against income, 40, 60, 80% of the adjusted gross income. So we saw an influx there about eight years ago. So we saw an influx there about eight years ago of these young professionals, nurses who came out of nursing school, they had debt, they had to pay off debt, they were working as a nurse, working as a pharmacist, and that rent structure there, or the pricing structure, was conducive for them to move here or stay here because they weren't priced out of a place to live.
Right.
So it's a very good point what you're making about the income.
But we, the matter at hand, as you say, is to pass this resolution for setting a new deadline. I think our last deadline was in September?
Yes, it was, yes, it was the end of September 30.
And that passed, so we have to move forward with this to, do we, I'm going to ask the same question I think I asked when we did-
Do we need a date?
Do we need a date?
So what my intention is, is to put December 31st, because obviously, my intention is to put December 31st.
December, okay.
Yes. And the reason for that is because the public hearing has to be noticed 35 days out. So for me to do any earlier, it could be problematic. So, yeah, my thought is, you know, you're going to be meeting November 3rd, you would schedule the public hearing at that time for some, you know, sometime in early December. And then if there are any changes that need to be made coming out of that public hearing, then that gives us time, you know, potentially to do another meeting. Even if it's a remote meeting, we've become so good at that, so we can do that if necessary.
So because it was initially due in June of 2022, do you feel it's imperative that it be submitted in 2022, even if it's December 31st?
I think it's imperative that we get it right, in terms of the content, to be honest with you.
It's a good answer, Counsel.
Well, it is, you know, because I've, you know, obviously, I've looked at a number of them. You know, I know, you know, content of a number of them I've reviewed, and some of them are certainly, I think, more of what the state was looking for than others. And I think that some of them, you know, educate the public more than others as well. And, you know, it takes time to do it, and I know, like I said, I mean, I know that there's some criticism of the towns out there, but I think it's unrealistic of, you know, the process that has been observed in some communities, who've really worked harder than others. And I, you know, I don't say that in a disparaging way, because we know what we've been dealing with overall, with ongoing COVID, and, you know, the toll it's taken on town employees and whatnot as well.
Yeah.
Would you like to read the resolution?
Well, we have to read eight?
Yeah, and I think that the documentation that you put together in terms of the statistics and information has been, you know, very, very valuable in terms of what you've already shared with us. You know, and just to give people a perspective, I think, you know, as I highlighted, a few things, and to not be considered cost burden in North Haven, a household must have an income of at least $56,922, you know, and a lot of people, I mean, you look at that, and, you know, if you're making $20 an hour, $25 an hour, 2,000 hours, that's $50,000 a year, you know, you know, both spouses aren't working, one's staying home taking care of the kids, you know, whatever, but still, you know, below the $56,000. So, you know, I think it just shows you, you know, you know, the fact that, you know, that affordable housing actually is necessary, like I think as we've all said, you know, for, you know, our friends, our children, our parents, or whatever, to try to actually be able to live in our town, you know, because it is a good place to live. And I think we need to come up with a way to help people do that, by making sure that, you know, there is a good, that there is housing stock. But Sally's member is pretty, is very good. You know, I think we are at 84% single-family houses based on your statistics there, and, you know, on 2019. So, you know, I think, you know, we do have, as Mike said earlier, which I think is a very important thing, we have maybe more chances of getting to the 10% for, you know, for our town, just because we do have water and sewer, you know, which I think makes it much more likely that if we are going to have, you know, a two-unit or four-unit, you know, duplex or whatever, or quadruplex, that we can do that, and other towns clearly can't do that. So I think there's definitely a reason to be optimistic, that, Mike said, we went from a little over four to almost six, and I think we can, I think we can continue to push that.
Okay, so Sally and Bill?
I think we have to read eight, and then the resolution.
Yes.
So I'll work on item eight here, which is something we've already done, really. To consider and act upon a resolution authorizing First Electman Michael J. Frida as the chief elected official of the town of North Haven to submit a letter to the Office of Policy and Management of the State of Connecticut, providing a status update to said office on the efforts of the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee to prepare an affordable housing plan in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 8-30J for review, revision as needed, and adoption by the Board of Selectmen, and designating a date by which an affordable housing plan will be submitted. So we've pretty much talked about that, so I'll go ahead and do the resolution. So I will make this motion resolved, that First Electman Michael J. Frida as the chief elected official of the town of North Haven is hereby authorized to submit a letter to the Office of Policy and Management of the State of Connecticut, providing a status update to said office on the efforts of the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee to prepare an affordable housing plan in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 8-30J for review, revision as needed, and adoption by the Board of Selectmen, and designating a date by which an affordable housing plan will be submitted. So I will make that motion for that resolution.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Item number nine, public hearing pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-20F, a public hearing for possible action on, including and opt-out from the provisions of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-20A through 8-20D pertaining to accessory apartments or accessory dwelling unit regulations.
If I may just approach, I just want to share something with you. So just for the record, when the notice of public hearings was published on, was filed and published in your Town Coach's Office and on the town website, I did attach the relevant statutes as well, so folks could take a look at the content of the statutes. I've already presented this content to you. What I've given you is a memo that I had given to Planning and Zoning, but just again for the folks that are watching at home, and those who are present, who are interested in this matter. So the statutory provisions require an opt-out at both the Planning and Zoning Commission level and in a town meeting form of government at the Board of Selectmen level. So you need to vote by two-thirds to opt-out for it to be effective, you needed to notice and hold a public hearing, and you will need to publish notice of your decision. And very, very importantly, you need to state the reasons for your decision on the record. So when I do the notice of decision, I'm not publishing those reasons in the newspaper, I'm just simply posting the fact that you had opted out of the provisions if you take that course of action. But you do need to have your reasons for your action on the record, and that goes for this matter and the next statutory opt-out that we're going to be holding a public hearing on tonight. So just by way of background again, and you have, again, as I indicated, a memo in front of you that I had prepared for the Planning and Zoning Commission when they took this up. And I want to make the point of saying that in terms of what the law requires, it requires municipalities that zone under the Zoning Enabling Act, which is in Connecticut General Statute 8-2, to adopt new or amend existing regulations to allow accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units, those terms are being used interchangeably, as of right on the same lot as single-family homes by January 1st, 2023, unless the municipality follows the opt-out procedures as I've described them to you. So what that means is that on every lot on which there is a single-family home, unless you opt-out, okay, you have to, if you have existing regulations that regulate accessory apartments or accessory dwelling units, you have to amend those regulations to comply with the statute, or if you don't have any regulations that allow that use of an accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit, you have to adopt regulations that comply with the statute. And that's what you need to do if you don't opt-out. So I don't, you know, I can't overemphasize, you know, the procedure, I've gotten a lot of questions about it, I know it's a little bit hard to understand, but that's what it is in a nutshell. And I explained to you when I presented, and there are, you know, there's various provisions in terms of what the content of the regulations must be, there are certain requirements, there's also certain prohibitions on what the regulations can encompass. But I made the point to you that the one thing from a legal perspective that concerns me as counsel to Planning and Zoning is that in subsection E of the statute, and I'm speaking of E-20 in subsection E of that statute, the last sentence reads, "A municipality may not use or impose additional standards beyond those set forth in subsections A to D inclusive of this section." And what that says to me in an unambiguous and clear way is that your Planning and Zoning Commission and any other agency of the town cannot act in derogation of the content of that regulatory language that you're required to have. If you don't opt-out, what's in the statute becomes your regulations. And I am somewhat concerned about that from the standpoint that if something arises from, whether a use perspective, something about the use, or from an enforcement perspective, particularly if there's something that is a concern from a safety perspective with your code enforcement officials, you will not be able to change the regulation. You will have to wait until the legislature acts to change the content of the statute. So I, you know, I point that out, I pointed it out last time I talked to you about this, I emphasized it with Planning and Zoning as well. I wanted just go through with you, and this is why I gave you the memo, you'll see in the memo that, and I was asked to do this, and staff was asked to do this, to provide potential reasons for opting out to the Planning and Zoning Commission for each statutory provision. So you'll see for accessory apartments, those potential reasons for the commission to consider for opting out that were provided, it's at the top of page four, there are four in number. And when they acted to opt-out, when they made the decision at their May 2nd, 2022 meeting, they did opt-out for the reasons, and this was stated on the record, they were summarized by Commission Member Teresa Ranciatovili. I'm just going to state those into the record so that everybody present can hear them. Number one is, "Adoption of an accessory apartment regulation or regulations in compliance with Section 8-20, subsection A through subsection D would negatively impact the integrity of existing neighborhoods in town, single-family residential and otherwise. Two, current zoning allows for in-law apartments, so adoption of a new accessory apartment regulation or regulations would not serve a needed benefit in that area. Number three, it is highly unlikely that adoption of an accessory apartment regulation or regulations in compliance with Section 8-20, subsection A through subsection D would assist the town in reaching the 10% affordable housing threshold contained in Connecticut General Statute Section 8-30G. And/or the statute, this is number four, the statute imposes limitations on the ability of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town to take action, implement controls to address zoning and building enforcement issues." So those were the reasons that were discussed. Principally, you know, they were concerned about the fact that, you know, they wouldn't be able to take any action if there was something that arose. And I think all of them did mention, too, the fact that adopting these regulations, they could not require the accessory apartments, because this is in the statute, could not require the accessory apartments to be affordable. So they didn't care for that piece of it either. So that was principally what they focused on. So I think that's all, unless you have questions for me, I'd be interested in hearing what the public has to say who's here would like to speak to this.
So I just have one question first. So a lot of towns, I know I've talked to other mayors and first electmen around the state, a lot of towns have already opted out. Is it your opinion that it's this board that creates the opt-out, or is it Planning and Zoning if it should, who chooses, or is it both?
So both. The statute very clearly requires that it be the Planning or Planning and Zoning Commission of the town, as well as the legislative body, and in a town where the town meeting is a legislative body, it falls to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So are we first or third in the line right now, in terms of us?
Well, there's only two, it's the Planning and Zoning and the Board of Selectmen.
And the legislature?
The town meeting, she said, in towns that have town meeting form of government, it's us, so this doesn't go to a town meeting.
Does not go to a town meeting.
We have a public hearing, but it's just-
All right, that was what I, because, you know, we've always encouraged the town meeting, that's the legislative body, so this, you're comfortable with?
Absolutely. The statute is very clear that it falls to the Board of Selectmen.
All right. That's good that that's repeated, so the people there understand this, the people watching, so, okay.
I'm wondering why they did it that way, it could have been done at a town meeting, but that's not what they said. It's very clear that's not what they said. What happens if the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Selectmen disagree on opting out?
Then-
Because it's only two, it'd be better if there were three agencies, because you can't have a tie with, there's three boards, you can't have a tie with three, you can have a tie-
If it does not pass, exactly.
It does not pass.
If both do not agree, then there is no opt-out at the end of the day.
And the Planning and Zoning has already formally voted to opt-out.
Yes.
And that was unanimous.
On May 2nd, 5-0, yes, unanimous of those that were in attendance, Vern Carlson, Paul Wyman, Teresa Ranciatovili, Jim Gillette, and Rod Williams.
Right. I remember reading the minutes, but that was in May, I mean, remember May?
And I think, I think back in July, you did give us the copy of the statute, and I think A20 subsection F clearly indicates exactly what you said.
Yes.
In terms of planning, if we have a Planning and Zoning, or if they're combined commission like we do, and then legislative body being the Board of Selectmen, and I think that subsection F actually says it exactly as you've said it.
Yes. I just want to point out, one of the reasons maybe that they did it is in some town meeting form of government municipalities, they've actually transferred the legislative authority to the Board of Selectmen.
Oh.
So they're not sending ordinances, Guilford does not send ordinances to the town meeting, it's the Board of Selectmen that decides. So it's so similar to that-
That's by charter revision, I would think, though?
I'm assuming so, yeah. That they did make that change, yeah. So that was done years ago, long before I lived there, yeah.
Of the-
Sally, here's the, you want to see the subsection, or?
No, I am.
She gave it to us in July.
The, of the four reasons, you know, regarding the dwellings, the one that, I mean, they all are important reasons, but the fourth one is the one that means the most to me, that the statute imposes limitations on the ability of our Planning and Zoning Commission to take action, you know, so if we don't opt-out, the state regulation becomes our regulation. And that kind of rubs me the wrong way. I believe in the sovereignty of our, we don't control too much, but let us control our planning and zoning issues. So that one is the most compelling. When you say that the reasons have to be on the record, do we have to actually read these reasons?
So I think-
How much on the record do you want it to be?
So I think it's fine for you to indicate that you are choosing to opt out for the same reasons as articulated by the planning and zoning commission at their May 2 meeting. I think that that's fine. If you want to add anything, if you want to emphasize anything, you know, that certainly is appropriate as well. But you have to have some acknowledgement of, again, why you're doing what you're doing.
But before we do anything, we have to wait to hear from the public because this is a public hearing matter.
Yes.
So I was just voicing which one of the four meant the most to me. But I'm going to reserve any final decision until the public hearing is complete.
Okay, that's what this is for. So we're opening up the public hearing on this issue. Would anyone like to comment? Mary White.
Mary White Summerlane. I would ask the board to opt out of this public act for accessory units. So I have reasons. Some of them you've already heard and some are different, but. So the public act would permit apartments attached to every residential home in town. That is bothersome. If everybody decided to opt for it, no good. The apartments have to be at least 1,000 square feet. I grew up in Hampton and it was a five-bedroom ranch, and it was less than 1,000 square feet. And there were five of us living there, plus some dogs. They are not affordable. They do not have to be owner-occupied. These apartments can be rentals. There is no limit on the quantity of them, so they can pop up all over the place. Let's see. These, if this were to be allowed, they would destroy the character of our residential neighborhoods. We already have regulations in place for in-law apartments. And this public act is contrary to the zoning regulations that we have in place. So I would ask that you opt out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Jenny Caldwell, 69, Kimberly Circle. I don't have a specific request about whether you opt out or opt in. I actually came tonight to learn some more about this. But I do have some questions about, or questions that came to mind about opting out, which is that if we have 85% single-family homes and there is no, there are no changes to our zoning other than to allow in-law apartments, as you were saying, mathematically, it makes it difficult to increase affordable housing. And I think affordable housing is important for multiple reasons, some of which you spoke about, which are young professionals. But just trying to keep, you know, younger people here in North Haven, they have to be able to afford where they're living in order to do that. So it seems like looking at some of the zoning that we have that, that makes so much of our, our town, single-family homes is something that we should be looking at. That the idea that changing that will not improve our affordable housing, I'm not sure that goes together when you're talking about 85% being the problem, part of the problem being 85% of the homes are single-family homes. And I mean, we have zoning regulations that require big setbacks and things like that. So, so there are a lot of things that impact your ability to, to create housing options that are more diverse options and beyond just apartments. So again, I'm not here to, to give a specific opt-in or opt-out, but I do think if we do opt out, I think maybe then we should be looking at planning and zoning and what are some of our zoning regulations are in order to allow some more options for, for affordable housing in North Haven beyond just, you know, the apartments and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Along what Ms. Caldwell was saying, and you, counsel may have some guidance here for me, but let's just look at the past 10 years. You've been around planning and zoning that long. Twenty-five, okay. And we have certainly had some development of additional housing units in the past 10 years. It's hard for me to think about all the places, you know. Lexington Gardens comes into mind. Out, Pierpont comes to mind. State Street comes to mind. But of the housing units that have come about as new dwelling units the past 10 years, what percentage were single-family houses? I don't think it was 85. I mean, I think we currently have 85 because it started out as all. It was a shock. I remember when the first condos came in on Hartford Turnpike, it was a big shock to the community, oh my God, condos. But that was 40 years ago. But, you know, do you see my question? I'm trying to get some sort of, some sort of statistical guidance on what's happened lately with residential dwelling development.
So I do have all that information. That will be part of our presentation.
Okay.
When we take up the Affordable Housing Plan. But just with regard to what Ms. Caldwell just spoke to.
Right.
When you see the Affordable Housing Plan and the manner in which it addresses the issue, because one of the things obviously is to study the current zoning regulations and to figure out, you know, are there impediments to affordable housing? Are there things that we can do? And one of the things that I mentioned earlier is there could be a required set aside for affordable, which we currently don't have. We don't have an affordable housing regulation within the current zoning regulations. So that's something that is all part of the plan. There are some specifics with regard to the units that we are getting credit for. Remember, when we talk about Lexington Gardens, that was an eight 30G application. So that really helped us quite a bit because it was 30%, 15% at 80% of median income, and then 15% at 60% of median income. And so, you know, planning and zoning asks always when they get an application, you know, from multiple units, they're asking, you know, will you consider doing a certain percentage of affordable? In some instances, the developer has agreed to that. In some instances, they haven't because it has, they've indicated it affects their bottom line and so on and so forth.
Well, economically, it might not be feasible for that.
So, you know, but you'll see in the plan the way that we go at that.
Well, that's, that's good to hear because I think Ms. Caldwell makes a valid, a valid point. Yes, we have a lot of single-family homes, freestanding, single-family homes. But we've also had some development in recent years that was not that.
Absolutely.
That's, so I would like, I anxiously await the statistics.
So many people have probably seen the duplexes that are on Clintonville Road.
Right.
That's a small project. It is only eight units. There's four duplexes there, you know, the last NOAA project. So, but I'll, you know, I can talk to you about, you know, in terms of those development numbers and so on. So you have a better sense of, you know, where, where we've, where we've been more recently, yeah, with it.
Yes.
Some of this is, I think, in the handout that you gave us previously.
Yes.
So.
Yeah. I, I know that it is in there. It is quite, it is quite lengthy in terms of the exist, you're talking about the existing conditions document, yeah, some of the information.
Here, you've indicated that the number of single-family houses increased by 249 over the past decade, while structures containing five to 19 units increased by 198, and structures containing 20-plus units increased by 253. So, you know, so I think there's, you know, the, with the overall 6% over the eight years to 11 to 19, a 6% increase in total housing stock, even though our population has pretty much stayed, stayed the same.
So one thing I'll just point out again, I know this is something too that's been talked about publicly, but the Affordable Housing Appeals List that comes out every year, the 2021 list came out in March, and that's still based on 2010 census numbers. So we haven't received the final 2022 census figures yet. So we'll see, you know, what happens with, with the number at that point. There should be a little bump up in terms of the number of housing units. But, you know, it may not be as significant as some other communities are facing, so.
Right. But our population, though, as Bill said, is, I think it went up less than 200 from 2010 to 2020. It's still hovering in the mid 23s.
That's right.
Yeah. Lots of people living alone.
That is across the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a trend. It's in, I think, the existing conditions. There's been a real desire for single-person housing. And there's been an increase everywhere with regard to single-person housing. So whether, you know, that's a result of, you know, people divorcing, people choosing not to marry, so on and so forth. But, or increase in influx maybe of young professionals, people, you know, young people staying in Connecticut, you know, whatever it is. But that, that is a trend. Because I saw that not only, I was able to take a look at the existing conditions for some of the other towns as well.
All right, Tom, Tom White.
Tom White, Summerlane. I support opting out of the statute as well for the same reasons my wife articulated and the planning and zoning. But additionally, I believe that opting into that type of a plan, you would lose the ability to regulate residential development in that realm. So not only the residential construction, but the parking component of that, the additional statute for parking, I don't believe you'd be regulating, be, have the ability to regulate that. So if there wasn't parking available on the property, they'd be moving to the street. And in that case, emergency vehicles could be restricted as far as access in, in emergency situations, whether it's fire or medical emergencies. So I think it's safer to opt out of it and let the residential in-law apartment take over for any additional needs there. And I've also, I've mentioned in the past, as far as affordable housing, I know some would agree. I, I disagree with them requiring the deed restriction for affordable housing. When you talk about income, there's a lot of people that I've worked with over the years in police department that were able to come here, purchase homes. They were all, we were all part of that median income bracket. And this whole area adjacent to Route 5 between here and Pool Road, particularly even beyond, there's plenty of residential homes, ranches that were affordable. So I always thought that if the state allowed you to reclassify, then you wouldn't have to worry about construction. You take the housing stock that you already had, reclassify it, and bring yourself closer to the 10%. Because that's the reality. It's affordable to live here because of what you in-town government do to, to, you know, reduce spending and run a, run us in the black, even through a pandemic. That says a lot. A lot of municipalities didn't have that luxury, you know. So there's a lot to be said there. So it is affordable to live here. When I moved from New Haven to North Haven in 1989, I got $300 back on my car insurance because it's based on crime rate. It's about what this municipality has made, you know, and how it runs and how crime is, you know, how people are, how they look out for one another. And, you know, it all fits together. So I, I think it's, without the ability to reclassify, it's like you've alluded to, you'll never catch up because when you put a construction plan together with a developer, they always tell you they couldn't do 100% affordable because it's not affordable to them. They can't afford the cost of construction. So without that, I, I thought reclassification was, was somewhere would bring you closer, or probably not the 10%, but it'd bring you closer.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Tom, and that, to go along with your same comments, so that was the second reason for opting out was that we already have zoning regulations for in-law apartments. So why, you know, we don't need it because we already have it. And I'm very much in favor of multi-generational housing based on having lived in one, you know, with my father, you know, and my family. So, you know, and I think it is a way to, you know, with an aging population here in town and the state of Connecticut, I think that, you know, I think in-law apartments and the ability, and also for childcare in terms of, you know, multi-generational, with the childcare crisis we have, I think it's, you know, I think in-law apartments are very, you know, very important, and we already have that. So this doesn't give us anything more than what we already have and good zoning regulations for that.
Mr. Katz.
Thank you for your comments.
Sherman Katz Sherwood Drive. My question is probably directed at our attorney. We have approximately 25 to 30% of our population in this town are seniors. And a good portion of those seniors have incomes under $50,000. Wouldn't they qualify as affordable housing? Living in town, having a home with an income under 50,000? Is there any way that we can twist that into?
Let's hear from Jennifer. Let's hear from Jennifer on that, Sherman.
So, so naturally occurring affordable housing, that is a problem in every town, not getting credit for naturally occurring affordable housing. So that is something that is also a part of the plan. You'll see it in the plan. And how to capture that. And the most obvious thing to do, one of the, one of the things that's in there, is to potentially incentivize to deed restrict as affordable, right? Because the, the issue becomes, and we talk about getting credit, it has to comply very specifically with the statutory language in eight dash 30G. And, you know, that's why you're not getting credit for those units because, you know, they don't fall into one of the categories for which you get credit. So, you know, that's something, and in some communities, it is a very big issue where you have communities that the, the median income is less than the state or the area median income. That naturally occurring affordable could be very, very significant. So it is, it is something we're going to be taking a look at to try to figure out, you know, how, how are we capturing it? What could we do, you know, to kind of change what's going on with that? And, and look, I, I've said this, I think I've said it to you, I've said it many times in the committee. You know, when you're talking about housing, you know, this isn't about just focusing on what's affordable. You know, this is, this is about what's, and, and people view affordable as being kind of, as being low income, which is a misconception about it, okay? It's about looking below affordable. This is about looking above. It's about even looking at luxury housing. Do you have enough luxury housing? Do you have too many people living in mid-income housing in your community such that, you know, that's not available to people who maybe can afford it and, and afford to move up? So, you know, you've got, you've got to think about it holistically. And one of the things certainly we have to focus on in a more concerted way is trying to capture that naturally occurring affordable.
Getting to Mr. Katz's example of 25 to 30% seniors living here, making less than 50,000, and obviously they could afford it. I mean, you, I, I think you have to ask the question, how many of that percentage don't have mortgages on their houses? That's why it's affordable, right?
Exactly.
Exactly. So is that what you mean by naturally occurring? People who have lived long enough to pay off their mortgage and, right?
See, there's so many components of it.
There is.
Right. The, the, you know, you've got the other piece too of some homes needing to be rehabbed or, you know, remodeled and upgraded, made more accessible. So, you know. So, you you know, these are the things you're gonna see in the plan, um, you know, in in terms of considerations, to try to make some effort at gathering some good information to be able to assist to ultimately, you know, attempt to reach that ten percent threshold.
But getting to what Mr. Katz was saying, if you've got this large percentage of seniors who are making under fifty thousand and they're affording to live in their single-family home, why can't they be counted as affordable? They really can't unless they have the deed restrictions. But I think you need to make people understand the impact of those deed restrictions on then who you could sell it to.
Of course.
And the price. So be careful about.
So we have.
Wanting deed restrictions to make it count as affordable, because then you're limited in who you could sell it to and for how much, right?
And that, and and look.
You wouldn't be able to do that.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
Because you'd limit the.
Again, that's what I said, you know? The question becomes, is there some incentivizing that could be done um with regard to that? So, you know, the, these are issues that many of the municipalities are looking at. And hopefully, the upshot of having to endeavor upon, you know, drafting and adopting these plans is that we come up with um maybe some, some strategies um for the future that we haven't employed in the past that make a difference. In particular, you know, yeah, I mean, some communities do have a lot of seniors that you know, their quality of life maybe isn't what it should be, uh, remaining in some of the single-family homes, because they're having difficulties um being alone, maintaining the property the way they would like, um, you know, there's so many issues, so. You know, there's so much to this, um, and and the plan reflects that. So I look forward to everybody getting a chance to read it.
But I I just want just addressing specifically his question about um seniors affording a house with making fifty thousand, you just can't, you can't just count that.
No.
That's what I'm, you know, you just can't say, well, it's affordable, because if that same house gets sold for three hundred thousand dollars to a couple, they're gonna have to get a big mortgage, and then that's where the affordable question comes in. And if it's deed restricted, then you're limited to who you could sell it to.
Yep.
And for how much, because depending upon the market and interest rates are going up, uh, you know, um, the the restrictions are dealing with the income of the peop, of the buyers. It's not the price. Everybody focuses on the price of the house. It's not really the price. Am I correct?
No, that that is absolutely correct, because we're talking about um it being eighty percent or less of the area, of the area median income.
Right.
Because our area median income is less than the state median income, so it's eighty percent or less of the area median income.
Right.
Such that um the individuals are not spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing.
On housing. So that would would restrict the marketability of your house, a great deal. So it's a conundrum.
It is, you know, and there, there, it it's really been an education, just in terms of um, there have been comments made um about uh the support or lack of support um for senior housing, um, you know, in terms of financing and so on and so forth. So, you know, these, these are things that hopefully are brought to the forefront, and maybe there'll be some change.
Yeah, but I like this. This is an interesting term, though, naturally occurring, affordable housing. Who thought of that? That's a good one.
It has the acronym of NOAA.
Isn't that interesting?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
We're still in the public hearing. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, let's move forward. Sally and Bill?
Okay, where where are we?
I've done the, I did number, I read number nine, but I didn't do the resolve.
Right, so we are going to decide now to whether to opt out. Well, I will um make a motion, resolve that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two O Subsection F, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Haven hereby affirmatively decides to opt out from the provisions of subsection A through D of Connecticut General Statute, Statute Section Eight Dash Two O pertaining to accessory apartments or accessory dwelling unit regulations for the reasons stated on the record. And for me, I think those reasons should be the same reasons as our esteemed colleagues on Planning and Zoning Commission. And personally, I would like to emphasize the fourth one, which is um the ability for our Planning and Zoning, um, our our Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't, I don't want any, to impose any statutory limitations on the ability of our Planning and Zoning Commission to take enforcement action. So um, I've made the resolution, I've stated the reasons, my emphasis on which reason, and that's my resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, uh, in the discussion, I'd like to say I'm in total agreement with this. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Number ten, we have another public here. Are you, are you happy with how everything is going?
Yes, that's.
Okay, I want you happy. All right, number ten, we now have another public hearing, which Mr. White will like, because it's about the parking that you already addressed. You you jumped ahead, sir. That's okay. You can come up and say the same thing if you'd like. We're gonna have a public hearing now pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two P, a public hearing for possible action on, including an opt-out from, the provisions of Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two D nine pertaining to dwelling unit parking limitations. So who wants to be heard on that?
May I go first?
You should go first.
Okay, so um this, this regularly, um, this statutory provision, rather, is much more brief and much more straightforward. It says, again, Section Eight Dash Two D nine provides that zoning regulations shall not require more than one parking space for each studio or one-bedroom dwelling unit, or more than two parking spaces for each dwelling unit with two or more bedrooms, unless the municipality apps out in accordance with the provisions of Section Eight Dash Two P. So the opt-out procedure is the same, two-thirds vote at both the Planning or Planning and Zoning Commission level, and then at the legislative body level, again, Town Meeting Form of Government, Board of Selectmen, is the entity that acts. So um, and just with regard to the posting, again, the notice of public hearings did include both statutes, so did include Eight Dash Two and Eight Dash Uh Two P, of course, which is part of it. So um, the public uh did have an opportunity to look at that if they were interested to do so. When the commission acted on May second of twenty twenty-two to opt out, um, I did also provide potential reasons for opting out. That's on page four at the bottom. There were five of them, that the parking limitations requirements contained in the statute conflict with existing regulations, um, that the limitations and requirements conflict with expert opinion, um, that uh the limitations have the potential to significantly impact neighborhood, single-family, residential, and otherwise in a negative way, um, that insufficient on-premise parking for residential lots or uses will result in increase, possibly excessive on-street parking, which is likely to impact pedestrian safety, particularly in areas without sidewalks, and um, and or insufficient on-premise parking for residential lots or uses will result in increase, possibly excessive on-street parking, which is likely to negatively affect provision of emergency services and access. When the commission voted, um, the reasons that were stated, and uh, Commission Member Teresa Ranciatto Vili stated the reasons as follows, um, that the statute conflicts with existing regulations, that in some cases it conflicts with expert opinion, um, that it has the ability to impact certain neighborhoods in a negative way, um, that insufficient parking may um for residential lots and uses result in excessive on-street parking, which might be dangerous, especially in areas where we do not have sidewalks, and that it may impede emergency services. So that uh, the motion was made with those reasons stated on the record, and uh, the motion was seconded and carried five oh. And again, that was at the May second Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting.
Okay, any other comments? Mary White.
Mary White, Summer Lane. So I would ask the board to opt out of this um public act legislation. And um, back to the, I grew up in a five-room house, less than a thousand square feet. At one point in time, there were four people who had licenses and cars and were driving. So that would mean that we were parking, although we had a garage and a driveway, and so we, but some of us were parking on the street. So it's my understanding that if this, these limitations were to be permitted, that they don't have to have driveways for these um accessory dwelling units. So that would mean that the cars would be parked on both sides of the street, because you would have to consider other accessory dwelling units, and they have no place to park. So for me, the, the biggest thing is the safety. I believe that this would be um, you know, a public health and safety hazard, particularly relative to the emergency vehicles. We all know they need to get there as quickly as possible, and so, and it is contrary to our zoning regulations. So again, I would ask you to opt out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move to the next.
Mr. White.
Tom, okay, sorry.
I just wanted to add that it it would minimize the, or actually eliminate the ability to regulate that, which you can do now in the planning and zoning realm. You wouldn't have the ability to regulate that, so the uh safety issue would be magnified.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments, let's move forward with this item here.
I'll make that resolution. I'll make a motion, uh, resolve that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two P, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Haven hereby affirmatively decides to opt out from the provisions of subsection nine D of Connecticut General Statutes, Section Eight Point Two pertaining to dwelling unit parking limitations for the reasons stated on the record, um, which are one through five, which I think we've already um reviewed and discussed.
That was D nine, I think.
It it is subsection D nine of Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two.
What did I say?
You said nine D.
Oh, nine D, I'm sorry, D nine.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I'll reread that again now.
Who knows what nine D is? We we might not want to opt out of that.
She left my glasses on, so. Just just for the record, I will read, I'll read it correctly and put my glasses back on. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two P, the Board of, uh, Board of Selectmen of the Town of North Haven hereby affirmatively decides to opt out from the provisions of subsection D nine of Connecticut General Statute, Section Eight Dash Two pertaining to dwelling unit parking limitations for the reasons stated on the record. So hopefully I did it correctly that time, I'm sorry.
Okay.
But thank you.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second, and again, to state on the record, I think, for me, um, I think our reasons should parallel the five reasons that the um Planning and Zoning Commission used in making their unanimous decision. And for me, um, uh, like Mr. White, I have a concern about the on-street parking. We do have a lot of residential streets without sidewalks, and so I share his concern. All five are important, but for me, number four is really a safety concern. For so, for those reasons, I second the resolution.
So we have a motion and a second in the discussion. I'll once again say on this, I am in total agreement with this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next.
Just a quick, Jennifer, just a quick question. I think the statute says that we have to um publish in the newspaper within fifteen days.
Yes, and I will take care of that.
I was gonna ask you, you'll do that?
Yes, yes.
Do that so the town can? I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't for.
I hope we don't have to do that.
No.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure somebody was gonna do it, and.
Val, you do it.
I didn't think Val was gonna do it either.
All right. So Bill and Sally, let's go to the next item.
That's you.
Oh, we're gonna skip the, knowing that this was gonna be a comprehensive discussion, uh, I'll get back to this overview with some slides next month, so we're gonna skip item number eleven.
Okay. So number twelve, we are going to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing Michael J. Frida to execute and file an application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for the execution of an assistance agreement in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents for the North Haven Playscapes and Town Green Bandstand Projects. So.
All right.
What do you, what do you say?
So here's what I say. First of all, you're gonna see a discrepancy between what's the number on the agenda and um, and there's a thousand-dollar difference in this, in your packet, it's what Sally's showing, right? So what, what happened was that the agenda represents the actual number from the state, not the document that you see here, okay? So we read, you read it correctly, okay?
Phew, okay.
So what this is, ladies and gentlemen, is as follows. So during the time that I was allocating federal ARPA dollars to improve the town, playscapes, parks, and things like that, we were working on a parallel path to file for grants, and we were fortunate that we've got this steep grant, uh, the two hundred and eighty-one thousand, as Sally mentioned. Approximately a hundred and sixty of that will go towards this project that I wanted to get done this summer, which is the bandstand on the green, based on supply chain backups, but we could not get it. So my plan now is to get that on the green by the start of this concert series next year. And also, and that was part of the federal funding, by the way, we had that allocated towards that. And then there's two playscapes involved with this. One is for children two years to five years old, and then there's another one that we had planned to improve and build from ages five years old to twelve. Those were in the original encumbrances on the ARPA funds, the federal funding. What this grant does now, it takes those expenses out of the federal funding. We replace the aggregate dollars with a seventy thousand dollar match, so we save a lot of money on the ARPA funds, because we pull out, we pull out two hundred and eighty-one thousand, we replace it with, we'll pull out, it's very complicated, so bear with me, okay? What you need to know is that we are removing projects from the ARPA funds. Seventy thousand of the grant that we have to match goes into the ARPA funds, and the bandstand and the two playscapes that I mentioned will now be part of this state grant. I happen to be with Governor Lamont last week, yeah, he was very, um, we're talking about this, among other things, I saw him at an event. And so we are in a position where we're starting to get even more of these grants.
Is that seventy thousand or seventy percent?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand of the two eighty-one?
It's actually three fifty, I think, three fifty. That's why I hesitated, it's too complicated.
Okay, I got you.
To look at the net amount of two eighty-one, that's what, that's what we're getting.
Okay, now.
Our seventy brings it up to three fifty, that's part of the match, but.
I got you. That's, makes sense.
All right, so, so that's what this is about. It's a good thing. And this is part of the mission here that I've talked about many times. I'm on a role and a mission to improve this town in every single aspect, and that includes infrastructure for children, playscapes, parks, athletic fields, and that mission will continue, and this is part of that.
That, that bandstand, that, that's that trailer that. That bandstand, that's that trailer that comes in, is that what you're talking about?
Well, this will replace that. Yeah, this will replace that.
Because we also use that as the reviewing stand.
Yeah, that'll be used for that, it'll still be used for that, yes.
It'll still be used for that.
Yes.
So it's gonna be a permanent?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Permanent structure.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the explanation on that. Sally, thanks for reading that, and anything else now? So.
I will read 13. Yes, I will read this. "For those at home, now is its good time to go get a drink or a sandwich. Whereas pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 4-66G, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development is authorized to extend financial assistance for economic development projects, and whereas it is desirable in the public interest that the Town of North Haven make an application to the state for $281,122.72 in order to undertake the North Haven Playscapes and Town Green Bandstand and to execute an assistance agreement. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen, I, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites of the state financial assistance opposed, excuse me, imposed by Connecticut General Statute, Section 4-66G. II, that the filing of an application for state assistance by the Town of North Haven in the amount not to exceed $281,122.72 is hereby approved, and that first selectman, Michael J. Frida, is directed to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of North Haven. III, that it adopts or has adopted as its policy to support the following nondiscrimination agreements and warranties provided in subsection A1 of the Connecticut General Statute Sections 4A-60 and 4A-60A respectively, as amended by Public Act 07-142 and 07-245, and for which purposes the contractor is the Town of North Haven and contract is said assistance agreement. The contractor agrees and warrants that in the performance of the contract, such contractor will not discriminate or permit discrimination against any person or group of persons on the grounds of race, color, religious creed, age, marital status, national origin, ancestry, sex, mental retardation, or physical disability, including but not limited to blindness, unless it is shown by such contractor that such disability prevents performance of the work involved in any manner prohibited by the laws of the United States or of the State of Connecticut. The contractor further agrees to take affirmative action to ensure that applicants with job-related qualifications are employed, and that employees are treated when employed without regard to their race, color, religious creed, age, marital status, national origin, ancestry, sex, mental retardation, or physical disability, including but not limited to blindness, unless it is shown by such contractor that such disability prevents performance of the work involved. The contractor agrees and warrants that in the performance, bless you, of the contract, such contractor will not discriminate or permit discrimination against any person or group of persons on the grounds of sexual orientation in any manner prohibited by the laws of the United States or of the State of Connecticut, and that employees are treated when employed without regard to their sexual orientation.
And that's it.
Excuse me, that's it? Oh, boy.
So before we move on, I want to just mention that the second part of what Sally read on item three, we will continue to see these, I'll call them regulations, against discrimination and against anything else when it comes to state money on state grants, so, and that I wanted to point out. For those wondering why that was so lengthy, that'll be the new requirement for us to receive these grants, so that there's no discrimination at all on any of these outside contractors that do this work, so.
Very good.
Sally, thank you.
So, I read the resolution, I'll move that resolution as read.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Sally's very good reading of that resolution.
Well done.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that, vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next item, Sally, or Bill?
Next item is, item number 14, resignations and appointments. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Parisi, formerly of Ten Victor Road from the Cable Advisory Council of South Central Connecticut, effective September 7th, 2022, term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item.
I will make a motion for the appointment of Patricia A. Brown, 511 Elm Street Extension Unit 5-3, to the Board of Fire Commissioners to fill the unexpired term of Joseph Cappucci, term to expire November 30th, 2023.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll definitely second that appointment of Pat Brown.
End of discussion, a couple of things, I'd like to say once again to the family of Mr. Cappucci, our thoughts and prayers have been with you, he's a wonderful man, served the town faithfully, and our thoughts are still with you. And, you know, Joe also worked out the recycle center, he was a very integral part of our recycling center on Elm Street. As far as Patricia Brown, I totally endorse it. Mrs. Caldwell, who's here, she's the chairman of the Democratic Town Committee, she reached out for me on this, I spoke with her, I told her I would totally support it. Pat Brown has served the town very well in various commissions, including the Board of Finance, and we've always enjoyed working with her. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would also like to just point out, again, I'd like to also pass my condolences to the family of Joseph Cappucci. He also served for about 12 years as a volunteer firefighter, and was a superb North Haven citizen, and we will all miss him.
Thank you.
Mike and Sally couldn't have said it any better in terms of recognizing his contribution and service to the town. It's under sad circumstances that we, we have seconded, the second, made and seconded the appointment for Pat to replace, to replace him.
Did we vote on Pat Brown yet?
Yes, you did.
We did, okay.
All right, item 15, we'd like to have a rap.
I'll start with the first one, bond, this is bond releases, and I will make a motion regarding P. 20, excuse me, P. 20-01, 77 and 83 North Hill Road. The original amount of the bond was 26,000, the current balance of the bond is 26,000. I will make a motion for the release of the remaining bond balance of 26,000 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer. I reviewed all the documentation on this bond release, there were no outstanding conditions to be met, so I move the release of this bond.
Is there a second?
I'll second that release.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next one is a bond release for P. 18-45, 381 State Street. Amount of original bond, 15,000, current balance of bond, 15,000. Release the remaining bond balance of 15,000 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer. So I'll make a motion for that bond release.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have bond release, P. 19-15, 67 Old Broadway East. The amount of the original bond is 2,500, current balance of the bond, 2,500. I'll make a motion for the release of the remaining bond balance of 2,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Next bond release is P. 20-24, 384 State Street. The amount of the original bond was $2,500, current balance of the bond is 2,500. Release remaining bond balance of 2,500 with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer. So I'll make a motion to release that bond.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Next, we have a bond release for P. 18-42, 411 Universal Drive. The amount of the original bond was 2,500, the current balance of the bond, 2,500. I'll make a motion to release the remaining bond balance of 2,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion to release that bond.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Next.
The last one, in terms of bond releases, is number P. 21-08, 80 Old Broadway West. The amount of the original bond was $3,500, current balance of bond, $3,500. The, I'll make a motion to release the remaining bond balance of $3,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Town Engineer.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Another shout out to Mr. Katz, Sherman, about two or three years ago, you recommended to us, and we did it, with the backup information on the bond releases. Sally mentioned it earlier, she went through the documents, as one of the ones, so thank you, you're the one that recommended that to us.
I'm welcome.
Okay. All right, item number 16, property tax refunds.
I have to recuse myself from this item, a former client of mine is on the list.
Okay, thank you for those who have. All right, so can I entertain a motion to accept the property tax refunds?
A little longer list than normal, but again, amounts are all small, and again, standing usual other than what Sally, Sally already noted. So I'll make a motion for these property tax, to accept these property tax refunds.
All right, I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstentions?
I'm recused.
Recused, okay. Motion passes. Item number 17, the next regular meeting of this Board of Selectmen is Thursday, November 3rd at 6:30 here upstairs in Memorial Town Hall. Now we're at the point, ladies and gentlemen, for public comment. Mr. Katz.
Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive. I have a question about voting at the town meeting. Sometimes there are people that can't make that meeting for whatever reasons they have that are legitimate. Is there any way to have an absentee ballot at that meeting, the way we do for absentee ballots for other elections and voting?
Oh, we have our attorney here, I'm not sure. Jen, what do you think?
I have never looked at that, I'll get you an answer to that. I think that you can send somebody, I think there's an ability to send a proxy, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that there is.
I don't know if there's a proxy provision.
Yeah, I'll look at it for you, and I'll let you know the answer to that question.
I don't think there is, but if you can look at it, let's, let's address Mr. Katz's question. Thank you, Jen, thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned something about the Hampton Inn, they were going to start construction, is there another holdup? I haven't seen any action there for a number of weeks.
That's gonna happen, Sherman. You see next door, the Panera Bread is.
Panera Bread's almost finished.
So, you know, hotels, you know, they're still coming out of this pandemic, where occupancy rates are very low, banks weren't lending money, but I've been, I've talked to the owner or the developer who happens to own it many times, and they're definitely gonna be.
It's still on target.
Yes, it's still on target.
And I'm just gonna, tongue-in-cheek, the only thing in this town that shows that Mike Frida ever did anything is that picture of him on the wall. So I'm just gonna say that maybe we should name this bandstand, the Michael J. Frida Bandstand, and not do it posthumously. Let's honor you while you're alive. Thank you.
Thanks, all right. All right, any other, any other comments? Any other public comment? This is Nancy Letty, how are you? So this is Nancy Letty, I haven't seen her in a while, she was a town employee for many, many years, and she was over in our community services department, Nancy.
I'm asleep, I'm coming up.
So Nancy, we haven't seen you in a while, come, please come to the microphone, how are you?
I am here to speak about a personal incident that happened, and I speak with gratitude of our emergency personnel in our town. And if I cry, it's because it's life-changing for me. Just less than two weeks ago, I almost died. My blood pressure dropped extremely low, and I was passed out at the kitchen table. My daughter had just arrived with her two children, ages three and 16 months, no, yes, 16 months. While my daughter was checking my blood pressure, we immediately called 911. My blood pressure had dropped to very low numbers. Thanks to the North Haven firefighters, the paramedics, and the paramedics from the Montuie Station, they helped stabilize me while being transported to Young Haven Hospital. Their quick response time made all the difference. I was in the hospital for four days, and I now have a loop recorder embedded in my chest so that my blood pressure and other vital signs are transmitted to a medical staff. My daughter has told me she thought I was going to die, but thanks to the North Haven Medical Response Team, I am here speaking with you. I want to thank those responders for helping to save me, while also being very kind to my family, especially my grandchildren who witnessed the emergency episode. We have witnessed the outstanding response and treatment from the North Haven Fire Department. When one is emerged in an urgent situation, we need to know only the finest service for our town. I would like to thank the North Haven Fire Department and the support which they have given to me, my family, and our community. I urge the community to support the North Haven Fire Department as they continue to service our needs, especially in lifesaving situations similar to what my family and I experienced. I also feel that I need to thank the people who run our town, because it's incidences like this that make us realize the importance of caring, smart, talented people, and I'd like to urge our community to support the additional medical equipment that may be needed in the future, to allow people who have had a situation like mine come and speak to people to say thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yes.
That was some story. I'm glad you're, you're well, Nancy. Is that Rick back there, Rick?
It is Rick.
How are you, Rick? And by the way, congratulations, I saw you just retire, so. They live on Winchester Drive, ladies and gentlemen, Nancy, Rick Lay, so thank you for sharing that story. Okay, any other comment? All right, hearing none, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.